Good evening and welcome to our forum for the Liberty School Board in the April 2 election. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson Clay, and Platte Counties. I am Anitra Steele and I am a member of the League. The League of Women Voters is a trusted grassroots, nonpartisan organization whose members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we neither endorse or oppose candidates or political parties, we are directly involved in the sharing the important issues. Our mission is to empower voters and to defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire, and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like you all know the League members volunteering with me. Cindy Schmidt is our timekeeper. Our Zoom is monitored by Terri Lane. I lead our forums admin team. And the public has sent in questions via the League's website, l w v k c dot org. Tonight, we welcome our moderator, Sandra Campbell.
Thank you, Anitra. And welcome, everybody. It's good to be here. I'm also a member of the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, and it's my honor to serve. I'm delighted that you joined us for this Liberty School Board Candidates Forum. Your vote counts. Tonight, we'll hear from two candidates for the Liberty School Board. Forums last approximately 90 minutes, but with only two candidates this evening, it'll be a little shorter. I'll ask each candidate the same question selected from those submitted by the public. The order of candidate responses has been determined by random rotation because there are only two of you. It'll be sort of like an alphabetical order. Each candidate will begin, will be given 90 seconds to respond to each question in two minutes for your closing statement. All candidates running for this office have been invited. We welcome the candidates participating in tonight's forum. Jeffrey Drew Marriott and Nicholas Nick Bartlow. Thank you for being here. This forum will be recorded and available on the League's website, l w v k c dot org. Candidates, please answer the question asked and stick to the topic. There will be no rebuttals, but you may go back to an issue during your two-minute closing remarks. By the way, we'll reverse the order of the closing remarks from the order used in question one. So we'll begin with Drew and we'll start off at the ending for your closing with Nick. So Drew, you have the first question. Introduce yourself and tell us what motivated you to run for the Board of Education? And what personal skills and knowledge about schools and governance make you qualified to be a school board member?
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Drew Marriott. And you know, I've served on the board for the last three years. I come from a family of educators. I often joke that my whole family's disappointed that I'm a lawyer and not a teacher. So I try to make it up to them every day, and one of those ways is serving on the school board. My legal practice, I work with a law firm. I'm part owner of a law firm that represents a little over 200 public school districts in the state of Missouri. So I dedicate my, my legal practice to representing public school districts. And so have worked through issues, just the whole, the whole array of issues that school districts face. And so, you know, I think in looking at my experience and, and working with school districts for the last 10 years, representing them in cases, I've argued three cases on behalf of teachers and school districts and school boards in front of the Missouri Supreme Court. In handling those issues and working with schools and having two daughters in the Liberty School District, I thought the very least I could do was give some time back and help, you know, give that time to our students, that time to our community and to our educators and see if I can, see if I can assist in, in providing some of that experience that I have.
Thank you, Drew. Same question for you, Nick. I'll repeat it. Introduce yourself and tell us what motivated you to run for the board? And what personal skills and knowledge about schools and governance make you qualified to be a school board member?
Yeah, thank you, Sandra. Thank you to the League as well for putting on this forum this evening. My name is Nick Bartlow. I do have a certainly a passion for the education of students. My, my objective, I've served on the board for the past six years, has been the same every year. I want to see each of our students really prepared for whatever possible future it is that they can imagine. My mom was an elementary school teacher for over 20 years. My mother-in-law taught for 40 years. My dad served on the school board in my hometown for 12 years. So there's a lot of education within my blood and specifically public education. My wife Carrie and I have three great children. A son who's in eighth grade at Liberty Middle School, a daughter who's in fifth grade at Epic Elementary, and a son who's in fourth grade at Epic Elementary. And so, you know, having those individuals that I see on a daily basis and get to experience what they go through certainly is a motivator for the school board as well. I will say I learned really at an early age and probably from my dad, the importance of giving back to your community in a way that best leverages your abilities and passions. And, and for me, that really is serving in a governance role. And you know, your question, Sandra, was really specific on, on governance in particular with regards to public education and education. The work I do on a daily basis is partnering with companies to help govern their, their goals and their objectives for what they want to do. And it's very similar from, from a school district standpoint. And that's where I feel like I have the, the abilities to lean into.
Thank you, Nick. Drew, what is the major challenge currently facing the Liberty Schools and how will you deal with it?
Yes, I, I would say that some of the biggest challenges we're facing right now are external ones in public education. So those could be legislative issues, those could be issues in terms of, I think, some of the culture war issues that we've seen play out in schools. And what I would say is that those are not issues that are necessarily really large problems in the schools themselves as opposed to external forces pushing those issues into schools. You know, so what I would say is that from, from our standpoint and, you know, and working with Nick and working with the board these past few years, is I feel like our board has had a lot of stability in looking and saying, okay, what's best for kids, right? Let's focus on what's best for kids. And whether that's, you know, avoiding some of the, the background noise, whether that's working through some of the legislative issues. I mean, we've seen funding issues, we've seen discussions of school choice voucher programs, open enrollment. And, and really what we need to do as, as public school districts is tell the good stories of public education and the great work that Liberty Public Schools is doing for our kids. And I feel like our board has done a good job focusing on that. Our administration's done a good job focusing on that. And we need to continue to show what public education is and what we're providing our students, what opportunities we're giving them to prepare them for life after school, because that's what this is all about.
Thank you, Drew. Same question for you, Nick. Do you need me to repeat it?
I do not. Thank you, though. From my perspective, I'm gonna take a little bit different, different look at it. As, as a district, Liberty, probably in the past decade and a half prior to the last couple of years, explosive growth from, from a student population standpoint. And so that, you know, what we were really focused in on there is obviously, you know, providing students with, with what they need, but it really became a facilities pursuit and making sure that we had the right amount of classrooms, the right amount of teachers, et cetera. We're actually headed in a slightly different direction as we look at kind of the demographers report and looking at projections of student population in the future. And we're seeing a decline. And so we're in the midst of beginning to manage those facilities, manage our overall budgets to really reflect a, a lessening of the student population as we look at it going forward. And for us, it's really going to be how do we appropriately and effectively manage those, those resources, both the facilities, you know, the, the, the teachers and the support staff that we have in place? What does that look like going forward as we begin to see just a lessening of the student population? And it's just, it is a, a very different aspect of, of managing the district overall, one that we just haven't seen in quite a while. I think it's just gonna be, gonna take a little bit of a nuance in how we go forward and manage. And so I feel like that's really, we're on the precipice of what that's gonna look like.
Thank you, Nick. This next question sort of ties into that. Liberty has an attendance rate of 80.80% according to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Attendance rates have been falling throughout the area. How can the problem of attendance be addressed? And Nick, you mentioned the decline in the student population, but what about the attendance? So Drew, could you address that?
Yeah, so I, what I would say is that, you know, from, there, there's a couple of different ways to look at that. So we can look at growth of enrollment or the decline of enrollment in the district. And I think part of that is continuing to advocate for the work that we're doing for students. When we talk about attendance from a, a daily attendance standpoint, you know, from the standpoint of, of students in their seats at school, and so much of our school funding is tied to that, is, you know, part of that is, is coming out of the pandemic, right? Coming out of a situation where we struggled through virtual. Nick and I both have children who, you know, went through elementary school and went into middle school through the tail end of the pandemic. And so much of it is about showing the value of what it is to be in school, right? To be in your seat, to be socializing, to have those experiences. And, and I think when we think back to 2021 and the experiences of not being in school, I mean, the value of seeing what it is that to be able to have access to school, to have kids in school, to not be virtual, to have those daily interactions is important. You know, from the standpoint Nick mentioned, you know, when we're talking about managing facilities, it really is looking to how do we best look and meet the needs of students in our district now, right? Transitioning from a, a district with large growth in terms of student enrollment to a district, how do we maximize those facilities and make it a place that kids want to be and that they, that they are in attendance?
Thank you, Drew. Nick?
Yeah, well, I think I'll, I'll approach it in two ways. Totally understand the, the 80.8% attendance rate as, as being a challenge. I think Drew's point is well taken with regards to coming out of the pandemic, right? We, and we see this in the workplace too. Many of us who are in our jobs, we, you know, we've got disparate attendance by coworkers and it's just a real challenge. And I think we all got into a position where we felt that there was choice in how we, we went to work and there's choice in how we learn, right? I can learn at home, I could learn in, in school, et cetera. And, and what does that, I can learn on the road, right? I could get an RV and go across the country. It was, you know, flexible learning environments. And as we look to what does that look like going forward? The value of certainly being in, in seats in a classroom is, is important. But I think we also have to recognize that the world has changed. And we've got to figure out, there's the measurement approaches Drew indicated, right? From a funding standpoint, that we need to make sure students are, are learning and that they're, they're there. But we also need to recognize that there are different ways of learning, there are different environments to learn in. And we need to make sure that we're making space for that, because students all learn differently and they may be more successful in a different environment. I know as a district and Drew and myself serve in this capacity where we've, you know, endorsed a, a 90% of our population being in attendance 90% of the time. And that's, we continue to push for that and we want to see that happen. But at the same time, we need to recognize some of the differences that our students may need from being, being set in a classroom.
Thank you. The national rate of teacher turnover is 12.12 to 16%. What should the district do to retain career classroom teachers? Drew, that's for you.
Okay, I, I didn't know if it was, yeah, absolutely. So retaining their recruitment is, I mean, one of the biggest discussions that we've had over the course of the last couple of years. I mean, the, the reality is, is we don't have a great education system and we don't have a strong school district if we don't have top-tier teachers and educators in Liberty Public Schools. And so we've, you know, what I would say is we've made efforts. I mean, first and foremost, you've got to look at compensation, right? You've got to be competitive in providing a good place for people to work, but you're also paying them to do it. And so we've made a lot of efforts to, you know, increase our pay on the salary schedule for teachers and educators. You know, we've got a very, you know, our Team Liberty approach and having those discussions and really taking stakeholder feedback from, from our employee groups has been, in my mind, very successful. But we've got to continue to improve on how we're compensating teachers in Missouri, because in Missouri, it's an abysmal realm, right? We've got to look at that. I think so much with Liberty is that we provide a, a strong community. I think it's a great place to work. And those are things that we give, you know, give our staff members those opportunities. And I think so many of them want to work here, but at the end of the day, it is a compensation thing. It is a benefits, you know, we've got to provide that in order to retain and keep those educators. You know, the, the rest of it, there's no doubt in my mind that the educators are dedicated to their students and want to be in education. We just have to keep them in it.
Thank you, Drew. Nick, what about you?
Yeah, there'll be several things that Drew mentioned that I'll certainly echo. I think, you know, one, one piece that I'll bring forward to, well, I'll, I'll start by this. I do think Liberty is, is well, is seen as a great place for educators. I think there's, there's talk amongst educators. I think they recognize what we bring to the table as a district. A couple of key points, there is a level of autonomy here for teachers to do what they need to do, what they feel is best for their students. And, and that is, you know, not something that is seen everywhere. So I do feel like there is a, a level of autonomy there. One thing that I think we need to get a little bit better about, and look, we do this for our students on social and emotional learning and bringing that into the classroom. It really is supporting all of our staff, teachers, support staff, et cetera, with social and emotional help when needed. You know, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I do know that, you know, there are opportunities that we need to be providing to give them space to recharge, to reset, whether that is, you know, physical activity or, you know, a, a mental break or something along those lines. We need to allow them that space to do that. And I think as Drew mentioned, our Team Liberty, which is, you know, our collaboration across the teachers' unions and the representatives that they have there for educators and our, our support staff as well. We need to get, continue to work with them, understand how, what they're hearing from their contingent and their constituents, and ensure that we're taking that into consideration to meet their needs overall as a district.
And you know, it, the question talks about the national turnover rate, but doesn't specifically mention what that might be in the Liberty School District. So I don't know if the Liberty School District has had any issues with turnover. Do you know?
It is, it is lower than what you see on a national rate for sure.
And I also know that there are incentives for college students to, to become teachers. So that's always a good incentive, because they racked up some student loans or, you know, some expenses and they want to be teachers, but maybe, as you mentioned, you want to make sure the salaries are comparable, that they would, that would entice them to come to the Liberty School District, so.
You're right, Sandra. You know, I know this isn't a question that you're asking, but we may have a few seconds that I could, could expound upon that. And, and a part of this is what Drew and myself and other board members have, have pursued. You know, we are very open as a district to innovative, innovative ideas. And one of those came from our HR team, who, who brought forward an opportunity to say, what if we were to create a grow-your-own program? Where we are partnering with, you know, juniors and seniors going into college, those who want to be teachers, you know, affording them a, a stipend for their education that they wouldn't need to pay back if they came and worked in our district after they graduated. And even more so, focus that in on a BIPOC population to again, drive additional diversity within our buildings, as well as solving some of those teacher retention issues. And we're beginning, this is the first year, I believe, we're beginning to see that group come back in. So again, we've, we've done this now for four years where we, you know, identify students who want to do this. They, they agree, yes, I'm gonna go to college, get an education degree, I'm gonna come work for you. And, and you know, we're taking care of some of their, their educational expenses as a result of that. So just an example of kind of how we as a district have decided to address some of that.
Thank you, which may, may contribute to the fact that you have a lower rate of turnover than the national. Thank you for that. Demographic projections show a gradual slowdown in growth of student numbers in the district. What effect would this have on planning for the future? Drew, can you address that?
Absolutely. So I mean, I, I think Nick, Nick hit this, this point well in, in the opening, but part of it is, is adjusting, you know, our mindset from a standpoint of, you know, building buildings, right? Building additional classrooms and really maximizing, you know, what we have and, and how we're set up to, you know, to educate our kids. I think the, the, you know, this is not a shift. The district has been innovative in how we're doing things. I mean, whether it is, is more of a, a shift to a learner-centered approach, right? You talk about programs, you talk about partnerships with businesses in the area and internship programs. And so, you know, I, I think what it helps us as a board do is, yeah, we're still planning on how are we using and maximizing facilities. But you're not just spending all of your time saying, okay, where are we putting the next elementary school? Or where are we putting the next high school? Because we don't have to have those discussions just yet. We can really focus on how are we best reaching kids? How are we best educating kids? Are we having programs that prepare them for the real world afterwards? And it's not, it's not to say that that work wasn't happening before in addition to the planning for facilities, but it, it does free you up to think about how can we be innovative? And how can we focus on the learners in our community? And so, you know, I feel like that's where we've spent a lot of our time as a board. I'm very thankful for that, because you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things that we have a great and very supportive community in Liberty and we can focus on those things.
Thank you, Drew. Nick, same question.
Yeah, I love what Drew was, was just saying there about the support of the community. And I think some of that came through as, as we made a decision as a board this past year to put in front of our community an, an opportunity to transfer some of the dollars that we have from a tax base, from more of our capital funding, which, which, you know, you got, I do not want to get into school, school district finance at this point, because it'll be just a head spinner. But you got buckets that you put the money in that come in, right? And one of those is a capital bucket that really is all about the buildings. You got another that's operations bucket that's really all about primarily the compensation of, of, you know, our teachers, et cetera. And, and we went back to the voters and we said, look, we really don't need the bucket for capital to be as big as it is anymore. And we need to move some of those dollars into operations to help out with the compensation, as Drew mentioned, for our teachers and, and our support staff. And so it's going to be those types of choices that we begin to make to say, it's, it's less about the facilities and buildings and it's more about investing in the areas of operation. Yes, it's teachers and educators. Yes, it's our support staff. There'll be other options within those, those buckets that just allow us to, to bring new and different opportunities to our students, to allow them just some different experiences that we may not have been able to have previously, because the focus was more on let's get, you know, seats and, and rooms and things of that nature. And so the opportunity to just open up and explore what might be possible from a learning standpoint is pretty exciting when you begin to think about it.
Thank you, Nick. Charter school expansion, open enrollment, and private school vouchers are current hot topics in the Missouri Legislature. What are your views on the school choice movement, Drew?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're very harmful to public education. You know, I think public education offers so much in the state of Missouri and that the funding, you know, funding streams for public education, as Nick alluded to, one, they're complicated to begin with, right? So, so much of that, you know, I mean, the majority of the funding in the Liberty School District is local effort, right? The next largest funding source is state. And I think if we start, you know, siphoning money away from public school districts, or we start creating a situation where public school districts are, are having to, you know, recruit and compete against one another to attract students. I mean, one, it creates a planning problem. But two, is that what's going to be best for students and, and understanding the systems that we have in place? You know, my biggest concern is, and there, you know, there are, you know, when, when you look at those funding mechanisms, it's, we've already got a system that's underfunded, right? I mean, you can look at teacher compensation, you can look at per pupil expenses, you can look at Missouri's position compared to other states across the country in terms of where we rank in, in funding public education. To, to then take that money and, and, and take it away from public schools is, is going to create real problems. You can look at Kansas City and the charter schools there. I mean, they're operating a number of facilities that are all coming out of the funding streams for KCPS that you wouldn't necessarily have to have all of those buildings. And that's a huge expense that only detracts from being able to educate the kids in that district. And, and I think that's a concern that if it expands statewide, we're gonna have the same problem.
Thank you, Drew. Nick?
Yeah, I, I'll echo, you know, Drew's concerns. I'll, I'll probably throw out just a, maybe a little bit of a different perspective or a different approach to it. I mean, my, public education is open to all, right? And I think that, that means a lot of things, right? From, from diversity of viewpoints to, you know, different physical abilities to, you know, different mental capabilities. We, we support all of it and we are here to educate every individual that comes through our doors. I am nervous and very anxious about a lot of those bills that are going through review right now, because they don't play on the same playing field. They are not stipulated to have to accept every single student that may come through the door. And that begins to be a real challenge for, you know, the public school system if we're diverting funds and we're not, you know, who knows who's coming through the doors now? What, what does that look like for us from a support standpoint? And can we appropriately support every student that then begins to come through the door? So yes, there is, there is definitely an issue with the funding portion of this and dollars being siphoned off. I think there's also a, a big concern about not everything is on the same playing field. I mean, the, the rules are different when we're talking about at least the way they've, they're written today with regards to siphoning those dollars into private schools or vouchers or things of that nature. And that's, how can you, how can you effectively compete within that arena? If the rules are just, they're different for another, another competitor that you're playing against? And that, I, it just doesn't help. It's not helpful for, for any student.
Absolutely. Thank you. This is a, this is a question that's really touchy these days. Have you ever met a transgender person? And what is the best way for schools to accommodate students with gender identity issues, Drew?
Yeah, so yes, I have. And, you know, I think, I think the important thing for me is that school should be a safe and welcoming place for every person. So it shouldn't matter how, you know, how one identifies or their gender or sexual orientation or race or national origin or any of those protected classes, right? I mean, that, that is, school should be a safe place. Everybody should want to be there and be welcome there. I think that, you know, the, the biggest thing, and, and this is something that I feel like we do really well in the Liberty School District, is, is partnering with families. And so if it is something that, you know, specifically transgender students, that is something that I would say, you know, as a parent, partner with your school, right? Have those discussions and, and we can, you know, work through those issues and come up with a plan that's going to be supportive of your student and provide those supports and, and make school a safe and welcoming place for your kid. You know, I feel like that is an area that has gotten so much attention and it's something that is, is heartbreaking that there are kids that, that, that don't feel safe at school. And so when we, we talk about, you know, our efforts to be inclusive at Liberty, to create a, a culture of belonging, which is so much of a professional development work that we've been doing, that means everybody.
Thank you. Nick?
Yeah, you know, actually, a, a couple of years ago, my neighbor across the street went through the process and, and was in high school as, as they were, you know, determining what they were going to do. So I sort of, from a distance, saw the experience that they were having going through our school district with that process. And to Drew's point, I was, was it perfect? No, I'm sure it wasn't, right? But, but I was fairly proud of the district for kind of the way that they just supported who that individual was and, and what they were becoming and what they wanted to be. And I, we as a, as a district, again, we're here to support every student that comes through our doors, period. We are not here to, to judge or determine what's going to happen with, with you in your life. We are here to support you and allow you to develop into the person that you're going to be and to give you, you know, the tools and resources that you need to go and do that. To Drew's point, and, and really from a district overall, right? A board is, is set in place to put policies, procedures, and governance to. to allow for the optimum um, um, effective support that we want to give. And we as a district have put in place and, and us serving on the board, those who've come before us have put in place policies and procedures that are very much about supporting students and their families and allowing them to make the decisions that are right for them moving forward.
Thank you, Nick. So what sex education did you receive in school? And what limitations to sex education are appropriate for Liberty Schools? I didn't make these questions up. They came from the public. So just so you know. So Drew?
Yeah, so I mean, it was, um, you know, I think the extent of it was probably like seventh grade health class, which, you know, had, had a diagrams of, um, you know, male and female anatomy and identifying parts and, and talking about how those, those certain parts worked. And that was about it. And so, um, you know, I think it's something that, uh, the, the reality is, is that it's important for, you know, for everybody to know how, how that operates, right? And, and I think that part of the difficulty is, is that um, it's such, it's become such a touchy subject, uh, with, with, you know, whether this is an, you know, a, a family's position to have these discussions, but are we equipping our kids with the skill sets to understand how to make safe and responsible decisions, right? Are we equipping them um, with information and allowing them access to information? That's going to help them make uh, medically, you know, guided and educated decisions that can impact the rest of their lives. And I think if that's something that, um, you know, if that's something as a public school district, we can be providing students to have access to information, to understand safe and healthy choices. Um, we should be providing that. And, you know, I think that there is certainly a component of partnering with families and them understanding and, and probably a component of, of families having a say or opting out of that. Uh, but I think there's certainly more information we can be providing our students and it certainly wasn't provided to me when I was a kid.
Thank you, Drew. Nick?
Sandra, uh, my, my education was so good, I have no idea what it was. That's how great it was. Um, I don't recall. You said that question. I'm like, I don't know. Uh, so there you go. Um, here's what I'll say and I'm, I'm going it through, uh, I, or we're, we're beginning to process some of it with, with my oldest uh, at this point, so I'm seeing it a little bit firsthand. Um, first and foremost, look, every parent has the right to look at the curriculum, period. I mean, uh, you want to know what we're, what, what's being taught, uh, what the teachers are walking through? You have that ability to, to take a look. And I think that's, for, for those, look, there are some parents who, they don't mind. Whatever gets taught, gets taught. Um, that's fine. That's, you know, their decision. There are some parents who want to be more involved and engaged and that's great too, right? We have options for both. Uh, and so I think what, what I would stress with, with parents is that you can see whatever you want to see. Um, now, is it my determination to say necessarily it's enough or you should have more? I don't know that it is, um, but the options should be provided. Um, and you can opt out of your student if, if, if you don't feel like it's appropriate. I will say that, uh, I said, I don't remember any of the classes that, that were taught to me. I do recall my dad signing up for a auxiliary class of which he and I went to and, and, you know, got more exposure to, to all of that. So again, that's a parent's choice, right? You can certainly do different things if, if you want to. And I think that's really where it needs to fall overall.
Thank you. Please tell us about an elementary or high school teacher who influenced your desire to be on a school board, Drew?
Yeah, so uh, elementary teacher, you know, I, I, I think I'm going to talk, talk about a couple. Um, elementary teacher, um, my, my grandmother. So I had my, went to a small, smaller school district, had my grandmother as a teacher. Um, when she retired from teaching, she served on the school board in my hometown. And so it's one of those things that, uh, you know, I saw the value of, of, well, on the inside of an educator on the board, but to the value of somebody who just had given her entire life to that school district. Um, you know, she was somebody who i- in the classes, I mean, i- it was project-based learning was a thing that, you know, didn't have an acronym yet, but she was teaching project-based learning, you know, back in the, the seventies and the eighties. And so, um, that's one. You know, what I would say is another one that, you know, middle school teacher. Uh, I had my mom as a middle school teacher because I was in a small school district. And so it was again, somebody who, um, you know, I had an understanding of how the school district operated as a kid um, and some of the issues that were faced. I remember times when, um, there were really, you know, discussions about teachers having to buy their own chalk um, because of financial issues within our district, right? And buying um, construction paper for class. And so, you know, I think that when you look at that and you've got the ability now to look at, um, how can we be making dis- decisions for the district that are fiscally responsible and ensuring that, you know, we don't have teachers that have to make those tough choices and have to buy supplies for their classes? And we're working for that. Um, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, those experiences as a kid were really informative for me.
Thank you, Drew. Nick?
How can I compete with Drew's grandmother? Battle? Um, no, I, I think back to, to high school and it, it goes beyond just, you know, service on the board, just in life in general. I think I had a, uh, uh, a teacher who focused in on the business classes that I took in, in high school, who was also student council sponsor, um, who just really was uh, supportive um, of, of the things that I, I wanted to do, that I wanted to try. Um, that, that, you know, continued my, my education and allowing me to experiment, uh, to fail, quite frankly, and be okay with failure. I'm, I, I am not, um, uh, generally a person who is good with failure. Uh, just not my personality and I've had to learn a lot about that over, over my lifetime. And, and, you know, Ms. Cameron was, was one who certainly instilled in me the, the, the knowledge that uh, you can fail, uh, but just learn from it, right? And, and move forward. And I think that's exactly, you know, when we look at a, at a, at a school district, when we look at teachers, when we look at, at, at administrators, et cetera, sometimes we look at them as, boy, they gotta be perfect. They, they got all the answers, right? They're, they're the teachers, they're, they're, they've got the book of answers, et cetera. And that's, that's not true and it's not fair either. Um, and I want to make sure that, that we certainly understand that uh, as a district and as a board and we support our, our teachers and our district and our administrators, allowing them the, the, the ability to go out and try new things and to do something different. You know, if it doesn't work, that's okay. Let's come back, let's learn from it and let's, let's adjust and, and move forward in a different way.
Thank you. Independents has joined twenty-five percent of Missouri schools by going to a four-day school week. How do you feel about this change and would you support it in Liberty, Drew?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the thing in Liberty is that we really haven't had a push for it, right? So we haven't had much discussion about it. That's not something that I think there's much interest in for uh, right now. Um, you know, I uh, have a unique entree into the four-day school week issue because I work with a number of school districts across the state. A number of them have four-day school weeks. And I think the biggest thing is, is how do you, how do, how did they spend time thinking about and planning out that fifth day, right? Is there a concerted effort to make sure that fifth day is focused on kids, credit recovery, college classes, programs for kids that need support? And, um, you know, as far as I can tell, independents put a lot of effort into, into that on the fifth day. I'm not saying all school districts do. Um, I, I think that, uh, you know, w- we're not having those discussions in Liberty and I don't know that there's going to be community support for that. And I'm not saying that we should. I think the discussion about um, recruiting and retaining teachers is interesting, right? Because so much of the discussion was on uh, employing and keeping teachers. Um, and I think there was some criticism that that wasn't focused on students. And so, uh, you know, I think that, uh, when we look at recruiting and retaining good teachers, that has an impact on students. So there is a component of that, that if we can have five great candidates for one position and we get the best candidate, that's going to have an impact on kids. And if we can keep staff members because we're providing some kind of alternative um, incentive for them, that, you know, uh, a different schedule, uh, that can be important too. But I think that there's so much to look at that and I think that, um, for some communities that works and for some it may not. Uh, but i- it's interesting because i- it's a different way of going about it, right?
Yes. Thank you, Drew. Nick?
Yeah, I think Drew said it best, right? I, I can't, I'm not going to judge any other district and what's right for them. I mean, we, we've got a, uh, what I love about the state is that, you know, they allow us to operate independently uh, and do what's right for our constituents. And that's why we have a board and that's why we're here tonight to, to discuss those things. So what's right for another district, just at this point, is not right for us. Um, I think there's a couple of things as I've, as I've watched it from the sidelines, if you will. Um, I haven't seen really any um, significant research that would tell me that a four-day school week uh, assists in the academic, you know, progress for students. I just, I haven't seen that. It may exist. It just hasn't been at the forefront at this point. Um, I think there would be some likely unintended consequences. We would need to really assess. Um, some of that is, who's taking care of that child on the fifth day now? And I'm not saying, you know, districts aren't certainly babysitters, but let's be real here. We, most jobs work on a five-day work week. And so if I am planning on, you know, being at work on Monday through Friday and all of a sudden now I have to find, you know, some, some childcare support for my, my kid because they're not in school on Fridays or Mondays or whatever day would be chosen, that makes a real challenge. I mean, I remember a couple of, of years ago when we decided to have an early out on Wednesdays to allow for our teachers in professional development. There was a lot of concern on one hour of figuring out, how can I take care of my kid because they're out an hour early? So it's, there's just unintended consequences that can happen as a result of that from our perspective, sitting in Liberty. Um, and I just think that at this point, I, there's just not enough research out there that would indicate that it's, it's the right move for kids at this point.
One thing that comes to my mind are the food insecure because we know that in, in our schools, there are children who depend on their breakfast or their lunch at school and maybe those are their only meals that they get. If they have that fifth day off, that's another issue that has to be considered is those that are food insecure. When we talk about diversity, we have to look at all of that. Thank you.
And it's, Sandra, I would say that a number of those districts that we work with have, you know, whether sending food home with students or having facilities for students to access, um, have thought through that. But, you know, I think that, that is absolutely one of the things I think about is that um, for so many of our students, I mean, two of their meals a day, every day of the week, uh, they're getting, they're getting at our school.
That's right. Thank you. Does the school district allow homeschool students to enroll in a school district class or to participate in sports or other activities? And if so, what are the requirements?
So if this is for me, that's an interesting question that I'd probably have to consult our policy on. Um, I will say that as much board of education policy as I get to read in my practice and life, I don't have ours memorized on that. Um, I would say that there are typically in our policies or uh, something that allows for part-time enrollment of homeschool students. I think there's some statutory language related to that. Um, and that is an option. I think that, uh, if, if I'm correct, that participation in school activities is not something that is allowed under our policies, but that's something that I'd want to go back and, and probably check on. Um, you know, that's typically, I think if I were to get that question on the street from an individual in the community, I would probably say, uh, here's the best school administrator to contact that can, can talk through that process for enrollment and how we're going to participate in activities. Um, but I know that, you know, in these discussions about school choice and we're talking about uh, different options there, an increase in the number of homeschool students across the country. Um, I know there are discussions about legislation related to school activities and homeschool students. Um, and so, you know, I think, I think that's something that I'd probably need to look more specifically at our policies to get a completely accurate answer on.
Thank you. And I can understand not being able to memorize and roll off on your tongue everything that's in your policy. So thank you for that. Nick?
Yeah, Sandra, you know, I'm, I'm glad you reminded us that these are, are questions from uh, uh, constituents. So that, that does frame it a little bit differently. To Drew's point, we don't have everything memorized uh, within our policies and procedures. It's, that's why we have a, a nice little handbook that we can reference online. Um, I do know, and, and this conversation came up, uh, maybe a year and a half ago, um, about extracurricular activities. So I know that homeschool students can participate in those extracurricular activities if they, you know, fall within the, uh, the Misha guidelines, if, if that's the governing body of, of that particular um, uh, sport or fine art or whatever curricular activity they want to participate in. Um, beyond that, I, I would be surprised if we say no. Um, you know, I, I, I think for us, um, as a district and this somewhat comes out of, you know, the superintendent who we, um, uh, continue to, 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 uh, support and, and appreciate his leadership is really about, look, there's, there's different options for all kids, right? It's, if, if you choose homeschooling for your child, there's probably a reason for that. And, and if there are certain, you know, classes and curriculum that you need, again, if it's within policy, great. Um, y- you should probably be able to participate in that. I mean, your tax dollars are going to, to fund that as much as anything else from a home, uh, versus homeschooling standpoint. So, um, I believe the answer is yes. But to Drew's point, we, we have a, a phone number, uh, to call at, at, at the district office to get you in touch with the right people. So I know we can figure that out.
Thank you, Nick. Senate Bill six seventy-eight currently before the state legislature establishes the Media Literacy and Critical Thinking Act. This act requires the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to establish a pilot program to teach media li- literacy and critical thinking during the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school years. How would such a program affect the students and the Liberty School System?
Yeah, and, and Sandra, I'd say that I have not looked specifically at that, that bill, um, that proposed legislation. I mean, I, I can certainly say that media literacy and I think the idea that, um, you know, certainly critical thinking is something that I think we can all get on board with. Um, I don't know how that's proposed in that legislation or what requirements that would have for D E S I. Um, you know, so I don't know what curriculum requirements and regulations that would then create for D E S I to then have, you know, disseminated down to school districts. How that would, um, how that would then be, uh, you know, accountability across school districts would be required for that to make sure they're meeting those requirements. Um, I think the, you know, the heading, uh, those things sound like a good idea, right? Can we have students that can research and find information and make sure that's accurate information? I think that all sounds great. Um, but for me, you know, when it comes to legislation, the devil's in the details and I don't know what's in the details in that legislation. And I, you know, I don't want to say that I'd support or be against it without looking at those details because there's so many bad things and so many pieces of legislation that I've seen um, that, that without looking at it and go- going through it in detail with you right now would not probably do any good for me to, to um, endorse or not endorse that legislation.
Thank you, Drew. Nick?
Oh, I, you know, I, I don't want to cop out, but I, I kind of have to take Drew's point of view on that without the details. It's, it's challenging to, to say how we would implement that or what we'd do. Here's what I will say. Um, anytime a, a, a bill or legislation is passed um, that impacts our district and, and how we may go about um, educating students or, you know, um, uh, implementing any procedures that might be necessary. Um, we do it with respect to the, the law and the legislation as it's written. Um, y- yes, we're going to take into consideration the impact on our students and our staff and facilities and whatever else it might, might take the form of. But, uh, we recognize that, that we've got to, uh, uh, to address whatever's been passed by the legislation, uh, legislators and, uh, and implement it. Um, with regards, and I know I'm taking this, this question a different direction, but again, I, I'm not comfortable answering, uh, uh, what's in the bill without reading it. I will say that, um, we do stand up, uh, and we do advocate, uh, for what we feel is right for our district. And if, if we were to look through this bill, um, and we were to see things that we liked about it, that we felt were appealing, that were right for the mission and, and, you know, our graduate profile moving forward, we'd be fully supportive of it. Um, if it was, you know, destructive or detracting from our overall mission as a district and what us and our constituents felt were important for our students, then we would be against it and we would advocate. So, um, yeah, I'll give you that one.
Well, good answers. Thank you. What do you think schools should do to prepare students to be better members of the global community, Drew?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think so much of it, um, a- and, you know, I think this is something that selfishly, you know, being a, you know, from a, being on the board the last few years, I feel like I've grown in so many ways. And so much of that is, um, you know, I practice education law. I feel like I'm a better, more empathetic education lawyer by having been on the school board. And I think so much of that in, in education is, is really teaching students how to be empathetic and good listeners, right? And so how do, you know, we talk so much about the importance of democratic systems in our country, right? We talk about uh, civil discourse and I think we can say that there's We talk about civil discourse and I think we can say that there's been a decline in what we would like to, you know, see as civil discourse in our country. And so much of that is, is how do you talk to and listen to people? And so when I think about how we're preparing students, some of that is, is how they interact with each other, how they listen, how they go about being prepared for what the real world's going to be like and what we want them to hope it's going to be like. You know, I think when we look at, at that, couple that with, you know, we look at our graduate profile and you can go through and, and say, in our vivid vision and what we expect of our students. You know, part of that is, is the least we can do is expect that of ourselves as school board members, right? To do those things and to show those dispositions and skills we expect of them. And if you can do all of those things, I think you're going to be better prepared to go into the workplace. You're going to be better prepared to be a global citizen. You're going to be better prepared to engage in, in our democracy. And, and if we can do those things, and I know it's ambitious, I think we're all, you know, collectively as a society, going to be better for it.
Thank you, Drew. Nick?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're just connected more than ever as a globe, right? I, I, it's, if, if we truly are, and if I truly am living to, to, to what I want to see happen within our district and allowing, you know, all of our students to succeed and whatever that looks like, we have to be global-minded. And a lot of that is to Drew's point, we're, we're talking about empathy. We're talking about how do you interact with individuals? It's about, I'm, you know, interacting with people you agree and disagree with. Being conscious of just nuances in culture. And that it's not, I mean, it's not a bad thing that people are different. It's just different. And you've got to figure out how best to interact with those individuals because you're going to be working with them or interacting with them in community on a daily basis. I'm just, I'm always fascinated when I travel and it's just within the states. But the amount of different people I see, when I, when I sit in the airport and I'm flying back to Kansas City, I anticipate I'm going to see people I know flying back to Kansas City. I could probably count on one hand of the hundreds of trips I've taken of people that I've actually seen that I know. And so I recognize that there is just this vast expanse of individuals that I will likely never come in contact with, but I need to be able to understand them so that when, you know, I meet somebody of a differing opinion or of a, of a differing background, that we can at least have a conversation, understand where each other comes from and be respectful of that.
Thank you. This is the last question before we get into your closing remarks. So what is one question you wish that you had, we had asked? And how would you have answered it?
So ask ourselves a question, Sandra?
Yeah.
Drew, you can start.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's, you know, what are some of the accomplishments that, you know? So we're both incumbents and we've got, we've got that influence. And, and I don't, you know, I hope you all can tell that Nick and I work really closely together. And, you know, I, I'm proud of what we've done as a board over the last few years. I've only been on for three years and so much of that, the way was paid because of board members before me and the expectations that they set. You know, I'm really proud of the work that we've done to create a learner-centered approach, right? To move to, you know, a framework where we're focusing on students and student growth, right? Academic growth, where they're at, where they're going, how we get them there. And that, you know, that can be, it, it's not one size fits all, right? It's going to be tailored towards individual students. I'm proud of the work that the district and, and the district has done in, in the success-ready students network and some of the efforts there to change, you know, in ways how we're, we're working towards assessments and accreditation programs. You know, part of that waiver, that's something that, that Dr. Jeremy Tucker has done so much work on across the state and I would say is a leader in the state of Missouri. And it's not so much the work of the board, but it's, it's really his work. But we've really supported it and it's something that I think we continue to support. And that I think as long as we continue to focus on kids and how we're going to get them ready to, to really function in the real world, right? These real-world learning opportunities and how we tailor that to them. I'm really proud of that and I feel like that's an accomplishment of this board. And I think that's something that, you know, I'm excited for the next three years and for the years to come, for this board to continue that good work.
Thank you, Drew. Nick?
Yeah, that's, that's a, a great question Drew asked himself. I think I, I would, I would follow similarly, but I would do it in this way. And I've been asked this before and, and I'll bring it up again. Would you pick the same, would you pick the members of the board that serve today as your, just in your vote, right? Would I serve with the same people? We are a diverse group. From, from a, from a beliefs standpoint, from, from a, a place of knowledge and understanding, you could, you can run the gamut of, we've got Drew, who's a lawyer, obviously. We've got teachers, we've got parents, we've got people from all sides of the aisle. And we work well together. And it's because we position ourselves as what's right for students, not what's right for my personal background and beliefs. And I think you've got to check that at the door every time you walk in as a school board member. Because again, we serve everybody that comes through the door. And that's important and that's critical. Because I'm, while I may not necessarily agree, again, we'll go back to the global conversation we just had. I may not, I may not agree with everybody in their position and their views. I respect the fact that I am here to help your child become whatever it is they want to become. And I've, and I, and that is the job of our board. And so, yes, we have opinions and we have positions and, and we work to understand each other's. But at the end of the day, it, to Drew's point, it's putting the student first and making sure we're doing what's best by them. And when you do that, you just can't ever go wrong.
Thank you, Nick. So it's time for your two-minute closing remarks. You can take a minute to gather your thoughts. And I want to thank you both personally. This has been very enlightening for me. I am in the Lee Summit District. I have no more children growing up. They're all grown, the grand, granddaughter is just graduating from Longview as a 4.0 and getting ready to go to MU to major in journalism. She's, so I understand the value of public education. I was reared in the public education system in Kansas. So it's very important to me and I have enjoyed, thoroughly enjoyed. I've learned so much from the two of you today. So I want to thank you. And we ask that you, and I know you're already doing this, encourage your friends, your family, your neighbors, the people at the grocery store and everybody you encounter to come out and vote because their votes count. And this, we know we're going to have a great turnout in Liberty. So for your closing remarks, I'm going to start with you, Nick, for two minutes, you know, your closing thoughts.
Well, Sandra, thank you for that. And, and again, thanks to the League for, for hosting this evening. It's, it's been a pleasure to be here. You know, I, I am an incumbent. I've served for, for six years to, to this point. Would love to serve another three years. To, you know, Drew mentioned this earlier, I'll say the same thing. It, it has been just an absolute privilege of mine to serve our constituents in this way. It has been fulfilling for me as an individual to be a part of this. I've learned so much, I've grown so much personally, professionally with my family. And I've appreciated the opportunities that have been afforded to me. You know, as I mentioned before, I've seen firsthand really the life of a public school teacher between my mom and my mother-in-law, and certainly my dad is, is serving on the board as well. I've dedicated, as, as we've talked about, you know, the last several years of my life. And, and thank you to my family who have given up the nights and the, and the weekends for me to serve in this capacity, to really know how the, the inner workings of a school district come together and to make sure we're doing it effectively and efficiently to, to, to serve the district overall. You know, my kids certainly give me that first-person account of the educational experience that they're having within our school. So I feel the pain and I feel the success as well as a parent. And I want to make sure that, that we continue to drive as much success as possible. And then I, I just truly see this as the opportunity for me to give back. And it's really a way that leverages my skill sets and talents, my overall passions, to really continue in driving our district forward into the future. So, you know, I am running, once again, for the board to ensure we're preparing all of our students for whatever future they can imagine. And I'd appreciate any individuals' votes here in Liberty for myself on Tuesday, April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew?
Yes, Sandra, thank you. And I want to thank League Women Voters for the opportunity to, to discuss, you know, these important issues and this important work tonight. You know, we, we appreciate all you do. And I think that the more exposure and discussion that we can have for some of these municipal elections, right? So talking about school board elections and, and the work that's going on in our communities is important. You know, our, our role as board members, I mean, these are nonpartisan roles, right? So this is, this is, I've never viewed this as, as a political role, right? This is a public service role. And so, you know, to echo what Nick has said, I mean, I think this is an opportunity, with my skill set, I feel like an opportunity for me to give something back. I believe in public education and I believe in what it provides our students and our society. And I, I owe so much to that. And I think about the mentors and the teachers and the people that have challenged me along the way. And, 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 and that's led me to this point. I've got two daughters in the school district. And so I can see the opportunities that, that our district provides them where they can thrive. And, and that's important, you know? And Nick and I both have skin in the game when it comes to our kids being in the district. You know, I would say that having served on these, the board for these last three years has been so influential for me. You know, I'm excited for the opportunity to potentially serve for three more years. You know, I've represented educators and school districts and school boards and principals and, and, you know, litigation, whether that's on litigation related to tax increment financing or constitutional law issues. And I feel like that background really, you know, really helps in, in what we're doing. But my North Star has been and always will be what's best for kids. And my debt to public education and the educators in my life, you know, the very least I can do is volunteer and give some of my time back to support our district, our students, our staff members in our community. And would greatly appreciate your vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you again, both of you. Really enjoyed this and look forward to hearing the good results from Election Day. So I will turn this back over to Anitra.
Thank you, audience, for your thought-provoking questions and your interest in the April 2nd election. I'm still, I can't start my video, I'm sorry. We also want to thank our moderator, Sandra Campbell. A recording of this forum will be available on the League's website, l w v k c.org. So you can tell your mother-in-laws they can sign in and, and see how well you did. Please take a moment to share our candidate forums via your Facebook page, Nextdoor and other social media channels. And remember, for complete voting and candidate information, visit l w v k c.org and vote411.org. Thank you and good night.